It's a little piece, but there's like a bigger one, so they're a very good price.
I hope it didn't cost you too much.
No, I mean this is like thirty bucks, so it'll work.
Okay, good.
It'll do.
Yeah, this one's good, but it doesn't pick up for you.
Yeah.
The volume.
Okay, I have six thirty. It's Thursday, May twenty-sixth, six thirty P. M., Special Meeting of City Council of Sandy Oaks. Texas is called order. We'll have a forum call. Alderman Tomassini?
Here.
Alderman Tenguma?
Yes.
Alderman Felisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matavilla is absent. I'm Alderman Trumbulli. And the mayor is, is ill and unable to attend a meeting today. And she was supported by her doctor to his vigorous, so she's not here. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. In this republic, we stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, first item on the agenda, item three, citizens, we heard about one individual signed up to speak, Mr. Michael Miller.
Good evening, everybody. I want to speak on item number six on the park. I'm not speaking to start a conspiracy theory, but as someone that knows has now, I just don't understand why they're spending money on the park. Well, we don't know if it's contaminated or not, passing the period. I don't think the park is contaminated. I feel that the barrels of trash that was dug up was from the excess of dump data that was buried by the prior administration. I feel that the barrels are probably old burned barrels. And it's too bad that they didn't let everything set in place and let the proper authorities look at them and decide what it was on the contents. And also, one council member was talking, well, it's only one little spot. But what you have to understand on hazardous material is that it leaches. And we don't know if there was hazardous material there. The whole park could be contaminated. It's probably not, but we need to know that. And the only way we're going to get to know that is if we get the core sample. And I've heard nothing on this matter, it's been going on and on and on. And I don't see how we can put buildings over there and expect people to attend meetings over at the park that could be possibly contaminated. You don't want your children, especially young children, that's loading with their commune system because they're really vulnerable. And if they're over there, there's something over there, and they get high blood or tossings or anything else, you know, you can have a lot of problems. But we need to have the core samples so that we know where to put this to rest before we spend money at that park. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is item four, is approval of payment for Markham Mary's $140 for security services. This is for our security from Allen County. Start your discussion. I approve the approval of payment of Markham Mary's for $140. Do I have a second? I have a second, Alderman Tomassini. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is possible discuss possible action on the approval of demolition of the clubhouse, the interesting city park known as Hartland Park. Now, we do know that the double wide is totally encased or mold has pretty much taken over the whole building. There are numerous leaks in the roof, the porch is falling down. It's actually a hazard sitting there as it is. So I just, I think, and we, you know, action against the city for leaving it there and someone getting hurt, someone going in. We can't use the building for, for meetings, reasons that we're here. So it's, it's, I think it's in our best interest to move on this item. Have any discussion from the council? There'll be, right, we do have three, four, actually, I have a fourth that came in as well, and I'll pass this one around there, but look at this one.
So the floor is not good, siding and the windows, I guess that it was falling apart.
If someone wanted to salvage the building, I guess because we're not in the business of salvaging, so we're basically looking to, to have it demolished and the area cleared. Whatever we would accept, it'd be totally up to that individual, that company, do whatever with the, with the remains of the building after demolition. I don't think it's in any condition that, because it's hooked up and moved. Again, that would be a decision that, that company would have to make. I don't think we can make that decision.
I would be real hesitant to let anyone hook up and try to pull that thing out. And just in one of the rooms, there are eight holes where you can see the sky. And to pull something like that and have it fall apart on our streets, I'm just not willing to take that chance. In that same room, it's the weight room. All the rain we've had, that floor's got a lot of weight on it with all that weight equipment.
So are we leaving everything in trailer?
The companies that I talked to, that's fine, they can go, we can take out whatever we want.
Okay, I don't know, I'm not willing.
The tables and chairs, I think, can be taken out of there and clean with a leak solution to make sure there's no problem with any mold on those. But everything, everything else, there's not that much in there.
What's in there?
Pretty much like what we left there.
Okay, so there's probably something like a couch.
The couch is in there, and I wouldn't, certainly wouldn't want anybody using that couch with it being exposed to all the mold.
And then there's the oven and?
The refrigerator and the oven. There's a desk and two chairs in the little office, but there's a plastic shelf there, but most everything in the office I've already tossed down. So it's a lot of trash.
So you have two minutes or?
Four, breathe, one, two, three, yeah, we have four.
So all these here are? So I was noticing on one bid that if the subject was, you know, something happened to the subject, they were responsible.
I think that would be a possibility.
But we're having somebody come out? It's separate, yes.
Could that be a liability insurance complaint? So do all these companies have liability issues?
We're sure that should be an apartment, due business, it's in a church. And it looks like on this one right here, we get paid for the? The office. Yeah, so that's an additional cost to them, so that's.
Is it okay to mention the name of the company?
Sure, can I write our area over here?
Dodson, they supply the roll-offs. Hansco doesn't use roll-offs. They have their own trucks that they bring in and load it up in the trucks. I did talk to a couple of companies about any, any type of salvage of the, and couldn't find anyone saying even any of it's good.
Recovered?
To, to, to take it just for salvage. For one thing, the way it's set up, it's, it's not a type of building that moves quickly. Even, they said, even if it was in perfect shape, the year that it is, and the way it's set up as a clubhouse or meeting place, there's just not a big market for it. Right, and it would, they, they said it wouldn't be worth their time to have it sitting on their lots for two to three years, and they figured it would probably take them that long, like I said, if it was in perfect shape. But there's not one room in there that doesn't have mold.
So this price for the new one, is what price for the double wide and the additional for the single wide, they're both going out?
We're just talking about the double wide.
The double wide, okay. Okay, so they just add that if we were interested.
The two coins. We have to find the roll-offs, so that's, that's. Yeah, I'm not sure, but on the Dodson says he's requesting for the landfill to pull the dumpsters. So is there, that's an additional cost as well? On the Dodson, phase one, you say you will request for the landfill to pull the dumpsters and return the evidence. I don't know that that's doable. Phase one, first page?
Yes.
At, have we down the first paragraph?
He takes care of all that.
But he's requesting for the landfill to pull the dumpsters.
Well, but he's, he takes care of all that, we don't pay for it either. He normally doesn't work with the companies that the city has a franchise agreement with. But he's stocked with it, and he has the problem with it, but it's a roll-off.
Is there anyone here from Dodson? And Hansco, is anyone here from Hansco? Okay, H-Tex. Sir, in, in your bid for removing the, the double wide, do you plan on doing the demolition on site? Everything can be done on site. You don't plan on pulling the trailer on the street? You're not gonna, you can't move, so everything will be done on site? And I see you're insured, so any damages to the, to the park in any way, you would take care of? So you're not gonna go in there and drive over the top of the seventy tank, you're not gonna leave?
I have a little thing first with the seventy tank first. It's not like, like just go over there and start breaking the park. It's sure, except like utilities, I don't know if it's gonna be charged.
We would take, we would take care of the utilities. How do you haul the, like, how do you haul the stuff away?
I have a long one in the trailer. I have a big truck.
You know, dumpster?
Yeah. I have a big trailer.
And how long would it take you to pick the job, do you pick the job in, in one week?
Yeah, there's no more than eight days.
No more than eight days.
It's not any hard. I have my own trailer.
What kind of stuff do you have to tear down? What kind of stuff do you have to tear down? What did you do?
I have a backhoe, and a steel loader. It's like a, it's a big backhoe.
If we decided to keep the rock skirt that's around it, for you somewhere else in the park?
No, it's fine, yeah. It's not gonna be trapped when you broke it.
I'm sure it'd be pulled with concrete, but if we decide to do that?
Yeah, we can put it aside maybe because of the, the, the.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Guarde? Where is your?
I live in one, I live in San Diego.
Thank you.
Fine, thank you.
What is defreeze material? What is defreeze material?
Debris. Debris, right.
Oh, debris. Debris. Debris, okay. Debris. Alderman, we accept the bid from H-Tex for the demolition of the double wide in the park. To the landfill. Do you take a step to the landfill?
Yes.
Yeah, I pick it to the house.
And you just got your insurance today?
I'll second my motion. I have a motion, a motion that we, a move that we accept the bid from H-Tex Company for the removal of the double wide, demolition of the double wide in the park. Seconded by Mr. Alderman Tomassini. Any more discussion?
I, I'm concerned that this is a, this is a big project for us, and granted, this is the lowest bid. But I don't see a whole lot in that, in his, in his written bid. I, I, all these other companies have great deal of experience. I'd like to see it done right. And for one truck with one trailer to do in eight days, what these other companies are saying it's gonna take five to eight days with roll-offs and multiple trucks, I'm, I'm just questioning that that's feasible.
Ask Mr. Guarde.
I'm, I'm, I'm making my comment to the council. I'm not sure that the lowest price is always the best. And it does concern me a bit that he's, he got his insurance today. That concerns me.
When, when Mr. Guarde showed interest in, in the job, I asked him if he had his insurance. He previously had a trucking business, which he decided to go into the fracking, so he sold his trucks. So he's been in business for several years.
Trucking. How many, how many double wides have you demolished?
Well, I think a thousand, more than a thousand.
So you've, you've never demolished a mobile home?
No, this is more smaller than a thousand. This one's a, a bill one, this is part of his foundation. I've been in business for a long time, I just went to oil, I went to oil. I have all the company.
I understand that, it'd be wonderful to have a local company.
Yeah, I have a lot too, and I think the other house around the water.
Jack of all trades.
I have all the crew at the company.
How, how big is your crew gonna be? I think it's your crew. Four men?
So you have licenses to keep these things safe?
Yes.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of selection, the H-Tex Company for the demolition of the double wide? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
In favor, opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, Alderman Felisbee is opposed. Three in favor, motion passed. Thank you, sir. We enter. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of possible action on purchase of a modular building from the Texas Facilities Commission, federal surplus property, and traffic control during the construction period related to item five. What this is, if everyone has a different package and picture. What this is is a, this is a, an office building that's surplus from the state. And it's located in Laredo. We actually sent our, our administrator on a little field trip down to Laredo to take a look at this building. It's being offered to us for the price of $3,000. It's a fifty by sixty office, commercial office building. And what we do is put this in place where we're removing the double wide from the park. I'm gonna ask the administrator to give us a little, right, this two together. So that's one section. This is what I got from Laredo, Chuck Smart.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, that will cover that size.
Dimensions.
Okay.
Fifty by sixty? That's actually half, and they're, they're estimated dimensions. If you would use a short video, what you found, what you're, what you saw, what do you think of, your opinion?
It is in a secure area that is operated by Department of Transportation. Building is currently used by inspectors. Go to the big rigs, they're coming across the river, should make sure that they have the safety standards for it, you know, sort of. It's approximately fourteen years old. It has been well maintained. There are nine small cubicles and four large cubes inside themselves. All the cubicles are wired to the phone and internet access. Two restrooms and a break area, storage, plus a service center in front of where Agent King goes. There are two private offices in the rear of this structure. One of them had previously been used as a server room, and it was all an internet and phone line within, and then branched out from there. The ADA compliant ramp that's currently on the building would not come with it. There are no obvious leaks or heat up places on the inside, they, 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 well.
Everybody's got to hand out the papers. What could be why the traffic control there? Well, I think what we need to do while the demolition is going on, and even while the new structure is brought in, we'll need to secure the entrances to the park, to include the back area, as well as the fence, the gate that's there now. So we'll need to, to secure the area so that people don't have access while, while this work is going on. I, I don't think we can find a better building for the price. I've actually done some looking around at double wides themselves and manufacturers right here. To buy a new building, a new double wide with the open floor plan, like what we're looking for. looking for. I was told anywhere from $120,000 to $140,000 to have one built. And the rent tag you'd have to go through to have it built that way because these mobile home manufacturers are, are bound by budget requirements as far as room sizes, as to what they can build. So you'd actually have to go to a, a company that would, that builds that type of building. We don't have anything here locally that, that does it. We have those small ones right there at 1604, when you get nothing off of the, the off-ramp going north.
Where is the building right?
The building is in Laredo right now. And so we, we'd have to transport it.
Which is next?
That's, yeah, that's the most, I don't know.
Sorry.
But for, for the price, we're looking at $3,000 for purchase, is true, which is, it's a fraction of what it's actually worth. It's a rear opportunity, we have a short window to, to act. Because it's actually with the, the defense reification to market, so we have to have first crack at it, just because we're, you know.
And it's for $3,000?
$3,000.
And we gently pay, what this was likely to be for?
Um, yes, we will be preferring to offer this.
I mean, offices and meetings as well.
Exactly.
Okay.
Sure.
So we'd be saving money by not renting this place?
Sure. Yes, ma'am.
It does look like it's a really good place.
Right.
Bitches are beautiful. I guess furniture does come with it.
Cubicles do.
Do, so we don't need to use them because we don't want to, they're removable?
Yes, but we don't get the furniture or anything in it. It's just the, the small, the small cubicles, they're, they're going to leave.
And a bathroom?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Is it, is it the same size as probably any of our other projects?
It's probably a little bit larger than what's there, so the footprint would be a little on, it'd be a little larger.
I've shot for certain buildings, and this is a rare price. I mean, I'm just surprised that you actually found one at this price.
It's a deeper, but not wider.
Say, I don't see.
And is it available now?
Yes, we have a short window to pack on this for its offer to someone else or goes to, to auction.
City has the right approach to view the, the weather entities that have been followed. This city, kind of, it's not that.
It's well within our budget.
Oh, yeah.
It costs a few.
Chuck Smart, get rid of the old one that doesn't give the, or we need the space. I motion that we purchase, we, we, we purchase modular Lily Texas Facilities Commission Federal Surplus Park to traffic control during construction period, remains to be entered item. I'm, I'm.
Okay, detract the controls probably as a separate item that will need to be done, so.
It's on the same line there, that's why I'm saying. You don't need to discuss that, it's, you're discussing item six, we still discuss that, if you want to take it as a separate action item.
I think we should probably take the traffic control as a separate item.
Right. Can you please?
Yeah, just purchase.
Okay, I motion that city senate, center purchase of a modular building from Texas Facilities Commission, Federal Surplus Park, related to item.
Does motion seem to make a purchase?
Motion to make a purchase. At what price? Not to exceed $3,000.
Motion made by older woman Hankuma, seconded by older woman Gillespie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is discuss possible action to arrange for and approve the transportation of a modular building from agenda item number six. Now we'll go back to the traffic control. So we're discussing item seven now, the, to arrange and approve transportation of the modular building. What we have is...
Will it fit through that thing?
It, it'll be two pieces, it won't come.
One over.
Yeah, oh, yeah, sure. It's not that with the back. I think with the back, maybe.
Well, they might be able to go through the entrance over, I'm not sure. I don't think they'd be able to get it through the back. Do you have to, you'd have to cut?
We need to go, we need to measure those and let them know the right string so they can come up. Look, we do have one proposal from Alamo Transport, and we have just one proposal, being that there is a requirement that in order for a transport company to do business with the state, they have to be vetted. This company is vetted, so we would have to go searching for someone and possibly incur a price for them, or a cost for them to do business with the state. So we do have a cost from Alamo Transport, and again, they're located around here on South Road, the total cost, and this is to include tear down there in Laredo, and everyone has the, the quote there, but it includes removal and disposal, scurrying, tear down the double wide, bracing it, everything, welding hitches, because I believe that the tongues have been removed from those trailers and rails, so they'll have to reinstall the tongues to, in order to tow them. And they're taking care of all permitting, anything needed to, to bring those things up I-35. Then they, when they get here, they will set it up as well. Doesn't include the site prep, which is where we come in with the demolition, that they leave the site clean so that when anyone comes in, it can be set in place, possibly use some of the, the ground or, or the area that's there. Probably it's going to be some additional supports because it, I think it is going to be a little bigger.
Would we have time to spend that, we have to, to remove the other buildings?
Um, we do. I believe we do. As soon as we let the folks down the rail know that we're, we're making the offer, then we have so much time, so many days to, to get it out of there.
Three days.
Thirty, so thirty days, three days, thirty days. So, so that gives us time to, to get the area cleaned up.
So we would have to have H-Tex finish by third day?
Within thirty days, and he said it'd be eight days, you'd be done, so we'll be good there. We need to take care of utilities.
Scheduling for Alamo Transportation to build that closed on the building, that's one o'clock start time, we've got to get it set up, we've got to head up this perfection in place.
So I would hope that within thirty days, we can get it done. So there's been some conversation with, with Alamo, so we, we, we know we can get this done.
Alamo is also authorized by the County General Services Administration, as far as I'm aware. I don't think all of the federal government has that sort of struggle to contain, but if you have experienced GSA, you like to.
I don't think they, they don't want to use the old stuff, it's just their procedure. That when they take it apart, they don't want to be responsible for taking care of it and doing all that, so we, we would have to skirt.
This building, does it have any axles or?
It's a tree load of ground.
Yeah. It's a lot of those.
It's a little hard to start in pictures. It's actually flat, it's not like a regular.
I was looking at it.
So I moved it, we accept the, the closure of Malamal Transport for the, for the movement of the modular building from Laredo and moving it here and setting it in place.
I second.
Motion made by older woman Tremblay, seconded by older woman Gillespie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, all in favor. Next item on the agenda is discuss possible action on the disconnection and reconnection of the septic system of electricity and water service from the clubhouse in the existing city park, known as Waterland Park. And, and on this, the movement of this building, the, in moving the old building out and bringing the new one in, we are required to disconnects and reconnects on all services. On the septic system, we have a quote from A1, A1 plus septic. And they're, again, they're, they are located in the city. They will go out and locate the, the existing lid for cleaning. They will provide cleaning of the existing system, disconnect from the clubhouse and reconnect to the new building. And that is the only proposal I have.
Will they come out and locate the septic before they, before they start carrying it?
Yes, before any work is done, right. It's so that, so that they know during the demolition phase where it is, so they don't go driving their equipment over top of it.
Right, until they locate it.
Correct.
Will they use that, that to talk to you?
I'd say, but they would do it right away.
Yeah, it would have to be done right. All these items are falling in line with the, the funds that were approved for the municipal building, so we're, we're staying within budget.
And, and, but we don't have anything yet for the electric?
The electric and the, and water, the water shouldn't, shouldn't be, that one shouldn't be a bad, a bad one. Do you, but as far as the disconnect, probably just getting, yeah, but reconnect water? Okay, so he's going to do the water, it's just going to boil. As far as the, the electricity, I believe we may have to get CPS to come in to do that for an electrician, because I don't know what, what size electrical panel is on that trailer, as far as how much service it needs. So we may have to, to get electrician once it's in place. I don't think that's going to be a, a showstopper.
We have a pair of condition, septic system, quality attached to it.
No, it's not one of them, it's not, is that one full board?
Oh, it's one of those ones that hangs on the side.
Right, it's, yeah, you can see that in the pictures. Yeah, it's got central.
Do they give you more than one?
All of the building, probably.
I didn't know that.
Yep.
It was, it was a, it was a.
I make a motion that we accept this proposal from A-plus septic service for, to locate the septic system, the septic system disconnect from the clubhouse, the septic lines and water, and connect the nutrient to the septic system and reconnect the water.
Can I just ask one more thing? Who's going to ask them to come out and locate the septic system to lead us started?
I can do that. So I have a motion, I'm quoted as A1, A-plus septic, so, proposal. I'll second.
I second the motion.
Motion made by older woman Gillespie. Seconded by older woman Hankuma. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, all in favor. I'm going to go back to the traffic control, separate items under agenda items six. And what, what this is, is, it's actually a safety concern, and we, we probably could have included this in, I don't know, but we do have a, a proposal from two counties to install some telephone poles at the park entrance. I'm not sure where, what this is.
Initially, what, it's actually the next one down, place the concrete, call the second one, that's right.
So it's not the?
If, if, I'm, I'm thinking we might want to, worded, where we might include those, the donated telephone poles, if, if needed. There may be enough of the concrete to seal off that, that cul-de-sac, Freckling Pass. That's a, that's the, the new entrance that people have created themselves.
So?
Yeah, Free Street and then.
When you come in the tree, or coming.
Shade, shade.
Maybe worse, maybe it would take a little bit.
Left on Freckling Pass, it's the first street people's got now.
So what about the other entrance? So what about the other entrances?
The only entrance is where vehicles can get through with the overall pickery shadow. And that one's got gates and a.
Or gates.
There are gates and a chain, there's a lock and chain shot.
Because we don't need to secure it and just make, give a, just a guard key to a lock to put on there so that he can get in and out. We don't need to secure the area of water in the demolition phase.
Well, I think that the one on Pickery Shadow is secured twenty-four hours a day. It wouldn't be difficult at all to secure that, the main entrance gate.
Right.
With a chain lock.
So.
If we may have to remove it, I don't know if we would have to remove the, there's a chain at that gate when it was motorized, you know, propelled it. And I don't know if we can open and close it by hand without taking that chain off or not. It wouldn't be that difficult.
Do we have the concrete?
The concrete block is back there. It's.
So this cost is just to move it?
That's to move it in, yes. Yeah. But it's a lot of concrete. And in addition to being useful, what was up before there on Preywood Pass was a six-foot chainage fence. And people have gone in there with the big trucks and they just plowed it over. And now there are two entrances. One for the regular vehicles to drive through and then the four-wheelers have made themselves a little one with a jumper. And the idea is to secure that where people can still walk in there if they want to walk into that entrance. But they can't drive vehicles back in there.
So this concrete barrier is just going to be large enough to block the.
It should, we think there's enough. But if not, we do have those donated twelve-inch telephone pole sections that we can use to augment that. My thinking on the concrete is it keeps that concrete, that pile of concrete out of the park, plus secures that entrance. Don't have to worry about anybody using it to mull it over. He's also going, any of the concrete that has any rebar sticking out of it, he's going to cut it flush. My thinking is it would be a good project maybe for the, for some of the kids. If adults can paint the concrete once they get it in place, down road with it, painted a solid color, white, whatever, and then let the kids, different age groups, do their own artwork on each one of those blocks. And that might discourage the older kids from repeating it.
So it's going to be permanent, not just while they're.
Right. Yes. It's permanent. And it does, it does clear that concrete then out of the park.
So there's one piece there that, if you keep saying concrete blocks. Okay.
There may be enough to do that whole cul-de-sac. If not, we do have the backup of the.
As for it providing the ingress, having more than one entrance and then folks have to get out of the park, there's another entrance right straight.
On Pickery Shadow.
So we have the Pickery Shadow and then one on.
Those are the real entrance.
So there'll be at least two entrances.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Well, we're able to secure all of them. For this price, we're going to secure everything.
Yes. And that's what I'm saying. If, if, if there's enough of the concrete, because it's going to be closed, if there's enough of the concrete blocks, then it would, that would be the price. I think we should allow, just in case we need it, allow for those donated telephone poles to use those if need be. And this would still be far cheaper than trying to fence that again.
Suggest that basically the bid that you put ten percent, say ten percent of bid price, and that way.
Well, I would say we just not exceed sixteen seventy-five. Can we sign up? Do the poles then?
And originally what we were thinking for the poles was, and now I'm second guessing on this because you're right, we probably do need two, two ways in and out of there in case of an emergency. But the thought was to take the gates off the Pickery Shadow entrance, put those telephone poles where vehicles couldn't drive through, ATVs couldn't come through, but people could walk through. What we could do in order to allow people to, if we let those gates up, we could install one small gate to the side. And there is actually, there is one in the single line. Install that over there where people can actually walk through. Because I would like people to be able to get into the park and not have it closed off.
Right.
So do you want to make a motion to not exceed the price?
Okay. Let me see how you like. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the bid from Two Conies excavation, not to exceed one thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars to place the concrete, concrete blocks at the Preywood Pass cul-de-sac, prevent motorized vehicles of any type from driving through
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to postpone item nine until the building is moved and we can address the ADA compliance. I just make a comment that we will ensure that the building is ADA compliant. We just reverse this item this time. I'll also pull item ten. I'll just table that. And if there's not any further questions, we have a motion. A motion by older woman Tomassini to adjourn, seconded by older woman Gillespie. Thanks for coming. That's the special meeting.
I have a question. Can I ask you a question?
You can. Me personally, sure.
I was just wondering, when you're going to give us an update on the T check?
On, on the T check.